All right, I will call us to order. Do we have someone to lead the call?
We do. If I could ask our student, Michael Overman, to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael.
All right, I know Tom is out of town, was hoping to be able to change his plans to get back, but he did not, but you can go ahead and call the roll.
Mrs. Gaskin?
Here.
Dr. Crowe?
Here.
The man is absent. Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Here.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. If I can have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll send them.
Mesa, second.
I'll second.
Beth? Corrections or additions?
Mrs. Gaskin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Dr. Crowe?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is board reports and informational items. Anything from the board to report? Mesa, I thought you were to report. I brought my wrong glasses. These ones just don't fit. What do you need?
They keep sliding off.
Can I try yours?
Yes. Getting very difficult to read. Thank you. Oh, dear Savior. Okay.
Roll together.
I'm going to highlight three pieces of legislation because they're the ones that are moving or have final approval. There's a lot going on, but I'll just go and highlight three. First one is House Bill 176. It's gone to the governor for his approval, so it's been passed by both the House and Senate. And this bill will revise the law governing our athletic trainers and require them to practice under a collaborating agreement with a physician or podiatrist. It would grandfather in the existing ones to allow them to have arrangements under chiropractors, but in future it will have to be with a physician or podiatrist. Okay? So that's one that passed. Second one is Senate Bill 1. This has been sent to Mike DeWine for his approvals, passed both House and Senate already. This bill requires students who will enter ninth grade anytime after July 1st of 2022, they're going to have to complete at least one half unit of instruction in the study of financial literacy, in either an elective course or in lieu of a half a unit of math. But the math course cannot be in lieu of Algebra II or its equivalent, or the course for which a state board of education requires an end-of-course exam for math. Additionally, and it doesn't specify, and I tried to find it and I couldn't find, but this bill also allows flexibility to our school districts in the requirements for the educational requirements for substitute teachers for this year. So I tried to research that further, and the only exact language it says, it says, "It permits a school district for this school year to employ as a substitute teacher an individual who does not have a post-secondary degree as long as individual satisfies certain conditions," and it just says "set forth" in Section 4, but they don't provide you with Section 4, so I don't know what those conditions are. So I'll keep looking for those. So that bill has passed, and it's on the governor's desk for signature. And the last one to talk about is House Bill 290. This is referred to as the Backpack Bill, and it would establish a statewide universal voucher program. We would create the Backpack Scholarship Program, under which all students in Ohio would be eligible for $5,550 or $7,500 to be deposited into an education savings account to be used for private school tuition, tutoring, textbooks, and allowable uses. The bill will repeal the Ed Choice and the Cleveland voucher programs. The impact of legislation on the future of the Fair School Funding Plan is unknown, but it would no doubt be detrimental for future phase-in to the plan for the funding for public schools. The cost of the legislation is being analyzed currently, and it will cost several billion dollars annually, depending upon the student participation in this program, and it would have detrimental effects to public education.
So does the money come from the state or from local? The per student? Because right now it comes from local.
It didn't specify, but I think the money is going to get pulled from us to go to them. Yeah, so it's going to hurt the public schools because they'll get pulled, go to the purse, and fall as a child. So those are the three to highlight for tonight. That one has just, as I said, been unveiled, so we'll see where it goes from there and how much strength that gets. Those are my three for tonight.
But that is definitely one to watch.
Oh, yes, because it's going to impact public funding, public schools' funding, and costs to us would be quite detrimental. So they said to encourage your senators and representatives to come visit your schools and see what public education can do for our kids versus, you know, them leaving.
I still can't figure out how that's legal. I mean, they're doing it now for the passing of the glasses. I mean, I still, I never could figure out why that was legal, because essentially you're taking public money and putting it in a private institution, whatever.
We will keep our eye on that. That's what we do, we'll watch closely.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Anything else from the board? I can give a brief KCAC report. We haven't met for a while. We do have some candidates that we do intend to interview, hopefully in the next couple weeks, and then get that group kind of up and working again, and sort of, you know, went quiet during the pandemic, but I think we're ready to meet again, so. All right, I'll turn it over to you.
I do have one item that I want to actually, more for the community. The board did meet at a work session on October 4th, and our Board of Education discussed our overnight field trips, and those are trips that our students partake in, like Disney, our Washington DC trip, our camp for our middle school, and of course, our Western Field Trip for our high school students. And we had a lengthy discussion on those, because we consider those very valuable for our students and for their overall experience, and things that I know that not only our students enjoy, but certainly something that's valued by our community, and we want to continue to maintain those trips. And so we're working through all of those right now with regards to the health and safety procedures and any protocols that need to be put in place. And so we're holding meetings with the advisors and our local health officials, and we will continue to evaluate these trips, because we do want to pursue these opportunities for our students. And so I know that there's a lot of dialogue out in the community with parents that are saying, well, are they on or are they not? You will see them on the agendas, and we're placing them on the board agenda for the board to initially give their approval, so that we can begin that planning process, with the understanding that if things were to change, the board always reserves that right to then reevaluate based on that. Many of these trips take place further in the springtime, and so, you know, that's a ways away, and we're hopeful that things may change. But in the meantime, the board does have to authorize us the go-ahead and the right to, you know, reserve our spots, to make sure that we can go ahead with the appropriate planning, make sure that, you know, our chaperones get put in place, and that we reserve our spots for those trips. Currently, you know, I am working with the superintendents in the area. We've kind of put together some brainstorming sessions to see if other schools are attending on any of those types of trips, you know, what would they be looking at, what are we looking at right now? It seems that Kenston is, you know, a little bit more advanced in the planning for those types of activities, and we've brought that to the attention of our health officials as well, and so we'll continue to work in partnership with them as they provide us with some of their expertise on what we should be looking at. And those are things like if a student were to get ill, you know, would they have, you know, how would they get back from a trip? You know, what would the role of the parent play? What is the role of our chaperones? How do we safeguard any of that? And so the board had a lengthy dialogue about all of those different scenarios, and they've charged us as the administrative team to work with our current chaperones, to work through some of that planning. So we appreciate them allowing us the opportunity to do that. You will see some of those things on the agenda, but I want the community to know that, again, with the board's right to always reevaluate those as they would stand based on what's happening as the trips draw closer to that timeframe. Okay?
Yep, very good.
Thank you.
All right, I think we can move on to commendations. Can I have a motion to approve the commendations?
No.
Bill, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Nancy, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, I am very pleased with the commendations this evening, because they involve some terrific students that we will recognize for National Merit Scholarship. So at this time, I'd like to invite our high school principal, Mr. Tom Gabram, to come forward and recognize some very deserving students.
Thank you, Mrs. Santilli, members of the board. We're honored tonight, and very proud of the achievements from five students who were named commended, National Merit Commended Scholars, and these are senior students. All commended National Merit Scholars scored in the top 5% of more than 1.6 million students who took last year's October PSAT. These students have demonstrated outstanding potential and academic success. Congratulations to the class of 2022 commended students, and we're going to start with Cooper Akers, if he's here. I don't think he's here today. Elena Leotis. Madeline Wurtzall. And last but not least, one other commended student moves on in this national competition, and he was named a National Merit semifinalist. Congratulations to Michael Overman, who will continue competing along with 15,000 others nationwide in order to then be selected, hopefully as a finalist, a National Merit finalist, which pretty much guarantees you some type of National Merit Scholarship to a select university. So what they will do now with the semifinalists is they will review, you'll resubmit your application for National Merit, and so they'll do another review, looking at the transcript once again, any updates to the transcript, as well as any other leadership or service opportunities that you were involved in. So they then will then, you know, compare and review all of those, and we should know, I think, January, February is when those results will come out for the finalists. So we wish you all the best of luck, and keep working hard, Michael, if you want to come on up. One last senior student we would like to recognize. I don't think he is here, but it is Micah Greenberg. Micah, are you here? Okay. He might have played practice tonight, so. But Micah earned National Speech and Debate Academic All-American. This accolade recognizes his academic rigor, his competitive speech when they go through all of these different competitions, and then the success he has at the competition level. So it truly kind of assesses his personal level of excellence in speech and debate, how well he communicates and competes against others in his category. Fewer than 1% earned this honor out of 141,000 members, student members, in the National Speech and Debate Association. So again, congratulations to Micah Greenberg on this honor. Thank you.
You know, members of the board, I would be remiss if I didn't make a comment about the excellence of these students and their hard work, and certainly of not only our high school team, but all of our teaching staff. I've said it before, and I want to continue to say that, you know, Dr. Poe and I had an opportunity to meet with several other area schools, and there was a lot of discussion about learning gaps and students missing out on their learning. And, you know, I'm proud to say that our teachers were very diligent in continuing that learning, and our students worked very, very hard and continued that learning process. And, you know, our state report card shows that the learning every day in our classroom continues to show that, and the success of these students, and our students that are in all of our academic clubs and activities show that. And so that's a tribute to this board, it's a tribute to the teachers here in this district, and I think that, you know, we need to be reminded of that. And we're very grateful for the hard work of our students. They really did, you know, rise to the occasion and continue the good work that they do every single day. So congratulations to you and continued success. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I have you call the roll?
You did that.
All right, why don't you do that?
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Crowe?
Yes. All right, before we continue with the meeting, we're just going to take about a two-minute break. Sometimes the folks that come for the commendations don't necessarily want to stay for the entire meeting, so we give people a little opportunity to head out if they so choose. So we'll take about a two-minute break, and then we'll reconvene. We're meeting now. The next item on the agenda is Hearing of the Public on Agenda Items. I have one card, and it's a non-agenda item, so we'll hold that for later. Is there anyone here to speak on agenda items? Okay. Next item on the agenda is financial items. We have items A through F. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll send them.
Beth, second.
Second.
Mesa, thank you. Comments, questions, anything that needs highlighting? Okay, you can call the roll.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Dr. Crowe?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Certified Personnel. We have items A through E. Can I have a motion to approve?
No.
Bill, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Beth? Comments, questions, highlights?
Just, you'll see that Mrs. Peace has sent in her retirement resignation at the end of the school year, and certainly will be missed.
All right. Okay, you can call the roll.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Dr. Crowe?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Classified Personnel, and we had pulled out item H, secondary to being related to Tom. Since Tom is not at that meeting, I'm going to put it all back in together, so. Motion to approve Classified Personnel, A through F and H.
Send it.
Mesa, thank you, second.
I'll second.
Beth? Comments, questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Dr. Crowe?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is Supplemental Contracts. We have two items, A and B. Can I have a motion to approve? Send it. Mesa, second.
I'll second.
Beth? Comments, questions? Okay, you can call the roll.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Dr. Crowe?
Yes. All right, next item that has business is item 13, Teaching and Learning. Items A through D, can I have a motion to approve?
Send it.
Mesa, second.
I'll second.
Bill, thank you. Comments, questions?
I just want to clarify.
Yeah?
So for the trip that's on there, we're going to go ahead and allow the planning.
Yeah, right.
But if at the time, like with some other trips we've already approved, like Band and all those other ones, if at the time they go to go, the recommendation from the health commissioner, if his recommendation is no overnight, then we would pull the trip, correct?
Right, the board would make that decision again at that time.
So if the recommendation changed, so this is to allow them to go ahead and plan.
Right.
There's always that caveat, because it's a pandemic, we don't know if it's going to be up, down, or what, and what the recommendations at that time will be.
Sure.
So we allow them to plan, but at that time, if it's a no-go, we would pull it.
Right, and the board always retains that right of Mrs. Gaskins.
And they understand that, too.
Right, and it's to allow, it's to allow the planning to take place and for us to reserve our spots. And also, you know, based on if I were to be able to have the appropriate number of chaperones and all of those things related to.
This is far away.
Planning. But if we don't start and get it out there to begin that planning, we will lose our place as well.
Correct.
And if you think about it, we actually did this already in 2020 when we had to cancel everything. I mean, those were all board-approved, they were planned, but they were still no-go when the time came, so.
Just so they understand, there's always that possibility.
And I just want to clarify that there is still going to be the option if a parent wants to opt out of the overnight for like seventh-grade camp, when most of the seventh graders go, the parents will always have the option whether or not to send their child.
Right, they always have had that option, so.
Yes. Yep, that's all good conversation, good clarification. It's good. All right, I think you can call the roll.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Crowe?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is Special Education Items, Items A and B. Can I have a motion to approve?
Send it.
Mesa, second.
I'll second.
Beth, comments, questions? All right, you can call the roll.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Dr. Crowe?
Yes. All right, next item with business is new business. We have Items A through F to vote upon. Can I have a motion to approve A through F?
Send it.
Mesa, second.
I'll second.
Bill? All right, comments, questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Mr. Timmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
And Dr. Crowe?
Yes. All right, we have First Reading Board Policy, and there was a boatload, so it's a technical term. And Mesa, thank you, as always, for serving on our policy committee. Is there anything you want to particularly point out that we pay particular attention to, or is it just sort of standard stuff, and we can kind of go through them?
It's standard stuff, some of them are new, and pretty much any of the changes in them are related to law changes that required us to change things, so.
Okay.
Or just clean up in language, nothing other than that.
Okay.
It's all dictated by statute and things that were passed that required us to do it.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right, now we are at Hearing of the Public on Non-Agenda Items. I have one card from Ross Bushman, so if you would like to come up and speak, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Ross Bushman. I'm an Auburn resident. I have two grandchildren in Kenston schools, and I've been told that a curricula or a program called PEAK is being taught here. I'd like to know what it is and to what grade levels it's being taught.
Yep.
Sure, I can answer that for you. And so I wouldn't call it a curriculum that's being taught. It is more of a philosophy, a mission, if you will. So our mission in the Kenston schools is that each student achieves their individual academic success, but we also stress that they maximize their personal growth and in a community that has a mutual respect, that focuses on their personal responsibility, focuses on lifelong learning. Those are like pillars of what we, you know, want to make sure that are essential for our students. And so we work with each of our buildings to create a place where what we consider as part of our PEAK program, which stands for a peaceful environment at Kenston. This was a program that was put in place many years ago now by a collaborative effort of staff members, parents. It actually was initiated by our parents, working together with our staff and our students, and a committee that came together. And in each building, we recognize that we have a place of what we call safe harbor for our students, that they can, if there's anything that's going on in their lives, that they can report to a staff, anything, share any of their concerns. There's the guidance office, there's trusted staff members that they can go to at every level on up. We also focus on behaviors each month, just in terms of what we call traits for, you know, each month, whether it's responsibility, whether it's making sure that there's mutual respect, those types of pillars for our students. And they're always age-appropriate in each building, and we foster that throughout, and our programs are designed to have that kind of sense of community and that mutual respect. And I would invite anybody that wants to hear more about those specifically at any of our buildings to certainly reach out to, you know, Dr. Poe and that PEAK committee. They do meet on a regular basis, and how that translates down into each of our buildings. So it's not a curriculum that's necessarily taught in, you know, the classroom, per se. It's more just. So we will, we do have messages that are in our student handbooks, so it's based on our rules and our regulations here on how we treat one another. It's a philosophy that we have with our statements in our district calendar. If you take a look at that, you'll see it, just in a sense of community. One of our themes this year is that we're all stronger together. It goes out in our weekly folders at our elementary level, newsletters that our principals put out at each building, maybe information in there about what they're doing in their buildings. I know at the high school, it's rules about just their bomber beliefs, rather than rules of what you can and cannot do. It's how they want to function as a school and as a team working together. There's information on our website and links to resources there. We do have a district-wide brochure, which I'm sure, you know, Dr. Poe will be happy to send you that information, and we do faculty, you know, information and newsletters that we put out to our faculty, and a lot of our faculty is involved in that PEAK program. We also have student ambassadors, so a lot of this is generated from what our students want to have for how they conduct themselves, and what they want their schools to look like with regards to school pride and how they feel about their school environment. So it's really, it's a great program in terms of just how our students see themselves as part of their whole Kenston community and their buy-in for that. So again, it's not a curriculum that's necessarily put into the classroom setting. Our guidance counselors may go into classrooms, especially at the younger age, and talk about just, you know, having respect, or in a story they might read, or something like that, but it's more on school pride and how students fit into their community. Do you? No, no. Our board members have participated, our community members. Like I said, it was really generated from our parents at the beginning, our students. So if you do have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. Dr. Poe is actually sitting behind you. She'd be happy to set up a time to meet and have further conversations about that. It's a very active group, but it is very fluid and stuff that we reevaluate all the time. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else for speaking on non-agenda items? Okay. Treasurer's report today? Are you saving it all up for next month?
I have a brief one. I'll just give you a little bit of an update. Good evening, everybody. Wanted to take a moment to thank the Board of Education for your time and comments and work at the October 4th work session, where I did some financial work for you, color-coded a bunch of stuff that I know that you all read through and probably got a pounding headache from, but I appreciate you putting the time and effort into that. As you recall, you approved a five-year forecast in September, which reflected a declining ending cash balance in pursuant to our current board policy, 6210. There needs to be a plan developed by the superintendent and treasurer, obviously with the Board of Education, for remedying that situation, which could include, operating levies could include reductions and all sorts of different things, which was part of the one-if, what-if scenarios that I presented to you, and I gave you six out of the potential million that are probably out there, but it gave us, it gives us a foundation to start having more dialogue about where we're going to go from here. And with that said, I just wanted to quickly update you with the current status of our financial condition. You approved this evening a spending plan report for the month of September, and as you know, that is shared with you prior to a board meeting, and it is on our website and has been on our website for a number of years now. and has been on our website for a number of years now, at least since my tenure. That spending plan report lists all of our revenue categories, our expenditure categories, and it takes a deeper dive into specific line accounts within, and I provide you with an overview of what we thought was going to happen, which is the expectation versus what did and why. And that is used as a benchmark to track that we are on pace with what we believe the five-year forecast has said to us. So it's a snapshot in time. And just to give you a quick update, through the month of September, which is the first quarter of our particular fiscal year, our first quarter and our third quarter are the largest in terms of revenue that we received. That's when we received the bulk of our real estate taxes, July, August, and January, February. And so, our expenditures over the course of a year are relatively constant from one month to the next. They have very little fluctuation, but revenue is a roller coaster ride. But we plan for what that's supposed to look like, and so, again, you approved that this evening, you've seen it earlier this week, but I just wanted to give you a real quick snapshot that we are currently just under $40,000 below our plan. And what that means is the expectation for the ending cash position at the end of September was $17,644,746, and our actual ending cash balance is $17,606,242, so a difference of 38,504. That is the difference where we're at right now. It's a negative difference. We don't like negative differences, but as you recall, in the five-year forecast and the assumptions, I had indicated that we were going to be far less conservative this year than in the past. This is certainly a result of that. There are an issue of timing or two within there, so I think if those timing issues did not occur, which they should remedy themselves next month, that negative position is more like a positive position, but not much, 40 to 50,000. So, going down the path of where we are with the five-year forecast, as of three months into the fiscal year, we are pretty much right where we thought we would be. So I don't really have much to report to you in terms of good news, we've received significantly more than, or bad news, we've spent significantly more than. So we are on pace to where we believe we are, which will, again, help in our conversation moving forward of developing a plan. You are updated on a monthly basis, as you know, and then you're also updated on a quarterly basis, and I am about 90% of the way through the first quarter financial evaluation, which I will give to you, and that also appears on our website once it's completed. So, just to give you an idea that we're pretty much right where we thought we would be. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? Hard to say right now, but it's better than being way behind the goal.
Right, I'll take it.
I'll take it as well. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Our collections are about where they usually are? Are we, like we were last year, way behind and all of a sudden it caught up?
Well, the projection that we were given was that the collections were not going to be there, and they ultimately turned out to be there. As of right now, our collections are right where we expect them to be, which is slightly more than 99%. That is for the second half of calendar year 2021, but the first half of our fiscal year, so we still have January, February that we need to, I don't want to say be concerned with, but that's certainly out there. I'd like to believe that that will be better than we think and provide us a little bit more of a cushion. Our tax collection is about $250,000 below what we thought it would be, but after conferring with the county auditor, learned that there were some delinquent taxes paid, or, I'm sorry, some folks paid their taxes after the deadline, which makes them delinquent, and they're sitting in the coffers of the county, and they will be sent to us in January. But had that not happened and they arrived when they were supposed to, we would be right where we would expect, actually, we'd be $100,000 over plan. So, the good news is, is that there's money at the county that's ours, you know, it's to the credit of us, and we'll see it in January, and so hopefully those collections there will also be higher and with that additional revenue as well. So, we're on pace to be exactly where we thought we would be.
So that's interesting. So if it's late, they keep it so we can find out exactly how much money we have there. We just don't get it until like the next time they pass out money.
Once the settlement is made, which was done right at the middle of August, once that settlement is made, then any taxes that they receive, whether it's through escrow or whether it's through you or I showing them to pay our taxes, that money stays there, and then it's reallocated back out to the district at the next advance. Our next advance is January.
Okay.
So it'll be included in there, so yes.
That makes sense, I just never knew them.
Now, if there was a situation where we needed to have our hands on that money for whatever reason, to make payroll or whatever, we do have the ability to ask for that because it is ours. If interest rates were four and five percent instead of four tenths of one percent, it would be troublesome and I would ask for the money. But at this point in time, we're just going to let this thing, you know, work as it does and not worry about, you know, asking for that money right at this point in time.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Carrie, to you.
Great, thank you. So a couple items. I did have a great opportunity to meet with like 21 new families to the district this past week, so it was great to speak with those parents and find out, you know, their reasons for moving into the district and hear their feedback on their experience. It was also wonderful to hear the voices of over 80 singers in the girls' corral and varsity jazz and the mixed choir as they performed the fall choir concert. If you could not attend in person, a live stream of the concert is available on our website throughout the new year, so it's definitely something worth hearing. And then I want to congratulate the 36 Kenston High School students inducted into the National Honor Society last week. I appreciate the thought, the planning and organization our students put into creating a memorable ceremony for the new inductees, and really appreciate their creativity and congratulate those students in the community service that they do. We do have an upcoming play, and we're excited to be able to, you know, continue that work, and our Samore program. So that's another program we're proud of, which is Senior Moments of Rockin' Entertainment, and we look forward to the Kenston Center Stage production of Father Knows Best on November 4th, 5th, and 6th. Tickets can be purchased the evening of the play with cash or check, and this production will feature two alternating cast. The district will also host a special Samore dress rehearsal performance on Wednesday, November 3rd at 6:00 PM. As you may, or some of you may not know, the popular 50's radio show comes to life about a wise family man, Jim Anderson, his common sense wife Margaret, and their children, Betty, Bud, and Kathy. The town's social life is suddenly centered on the Anderson household. The excitement and humorous complications grow, and then in the final scene, father discovers that while he may know best, the young people know a little too. So we hope that the community will certainly enjoy that production, and we look forward to inviting our seniors back in to be able to see the theater. We are also having our Family Ties Night again, so we do want to thank the community, but we also want to remind our parents of that evening. We believe in the importance of family, and it is the single most important influence in a child's life. So, you know, nothing takes the place of that family, and that's why we strive to nurture and build relationships between family and school. Some of the researched benefits of spending time together regularly as a family includes the increased academic success, and there is a link to reduction in substance abuse and strengthening that family bond, and so we certainly encourage that time with families and those students. So on Tuesday, November 2nd, the entire school district will take part in what we call Family Ties. And Family Ties Nights are evenings with no homework assigned, no athletic practices or games after 4:30 PM, and no meetings or activities hosted in the district. Please plan to spend the evening enjoying your family. Have a game night, go for a walk at a local park, or read together. If you are a local restaurant that would like to partner with us by offering a special discount for those Family Ties days, we certainly would love to hear from you and promote that out to our families. Again, we think this is a valuable night where people can maybe just slow down and take a little breath and do some reconnection with their family, so take advantage of it. Those non-busy nights don't come that often. I do want to let people know that as Purple Ribbon Schools, we are planning for our Veterans' Day celebrations. Each building has its own memorable way of recognizing and celebrating our veterans. The Kenston Alumni Association in partnership with the district has created a Military Wall of Honor. It was unveiled on Veterans' Day in 2018, and we continue to add and recognize graduates as their information is submitted to us. So if you have a veteran in your family, please do send that over to us. We are proud of our brave and selfless service members who graduated from Auburn, Bainbridge, or Kenston High Schools, and we wish to recognize their service on behalf of the United States of America with the Kenston Schools Alumni Military Wall of Honor Program. To submit that information to honor graduates or employees who are active or veterans of the United States Armed Forces, don't hesitate to get in touch with us at the board office, so we'll take those at any time. And then please do pay attention to the individual announcements from the buildings with the activities that we have planned. We are limiting some of the programs where we have, you know, people into our buildings for obvious reasons, you know, with our students, but we certainly have found ways to create meaningful recognition and for both our students' learning and then also for our veterans. This year's Kenston PTO fundraiser, it's a fund for all. It runs from October 11th through the 22nd, and during the campaign, Kenston families and staff can support our PTO programs through direct donation with no items to sell. 100% of the donation goes directly to the building's PTOs to fund their programs, and our PTO certainly ask for their, to support by making a tax-deductible donation to help their programs. And I express gratitude to all those parents who volunteer on a daily basis to support our students and our schools. They're just behind the scenes. There are parents that are here on a daily basis, and it's amazing the amount of time and the work that they put in, and we're very, very grateful for their support. I almost hesitate to say this because the weather is starting to turn, but at this time, the plan for school closure due to a calamity day such as a loss of power or water or poor road conditions will be that we won't have any posted work for our students on those days, so they'll truly be the snow days. As I walk past the Kenston crazies at the football games, they already have started murmuring, "snow days." However, if the number of calamity days nears five throughout the school year, we will reevaluate our procedure to ensure that the state requirements for our instructional minutes is met. So, you know, once I start getting towards that number of days, you know, I don't want to have to ever make the announcement that we would have to make up days in the summertime. So if we did have to go to using our Google classrooms or posting our assignments, we would then enact that. But for now, if we call a calamity day, those are the students' days to enjoy. Do want to provide you with some athletic updates because we've had a tremendous fall season in many of our sports, and it is remarkable to me the number of hours that our students commit to their athletic programs and then are still able to keep up with such excellent academic work. And so, I just think that's something that we need to highlight always. Both cross-country boys and girls have been ranked in the Division I State Poll this weekend, and Kenston hosted the WRC Championship, where both the boys and girls teams finished in second place. They will move on to postseason competing at Madison this weekend. In football, the football team has an 8-1 overall record and is 4-1 in conference play. The team has been ranked as high as number three in the Division III State Poll. They conclude their regular season play at Mayfield this Friday. The boys' golf team completed an 8-4 conference season. They finished third in both the Western Reserve Conference Tournament and conference standings. The girls' golf team concluded their season with an overall record of 11-2 and 9-1, conference record earning first-place honors. In addition, Emmy Gilbert was named the WRC Player of the Year for her first-place finish in the WRC Tournament, and Kip Freeman earned the WRC Coach of the Year. Boys' soccer team enters postseason play as the number 18 seed, and they will face men on the road in the first round on Wednesday. Their regular season record was 8-7-1 and 3-3 in the conference. And the girls' soccer team concluded regular season play with a 6-0 record in the conference, earning championship honors and an overall record of 14 wins, zero losses, two ties. Coach Jonathan Kostoff was named Coach of the Year. The team ranked as high as fifth in the Division II State Poll, entering the OHSSA, or OHSAA postseason as the number one seed. They earned a first-round bye and will host the winner of the Gerard Ravenna game on Thursday. Big game.
Oh, wait, where is it? Do you remember?
It's here.
Yeah.
So, it's just been outstanding seasons watching, watching these teams. The girls' tennis team, under the leadership of first-year coach Tori McNeil, completed the conference season with a 6-0 record and a 12-5 overall record. They earned the WRC Tournament and season champions, with Brooke McNeil earning Player of the Year and Coach McNeil earning Player of the Year, and Coach McNeil named the WRC Coach of the Year. In addition, they placed in the top 16 of the Ohio Tennis Coaches Association State Tournament. The doubles team of Brooke McNeil and Maddie Davilla were sectional champs and qualified for the Division I State Tournament that begins on Friday. You like, those two, watching them play is pretty phenomenal. The bomber volleyball team concludes their regular season with an undefeated 12-0 conference schedule and an overall record of 18-4. In addition, Christian Jolly earned WRC Coach of the Year honors. The team ranked as high as eighth in the Division II State Poll and entered the Ohio High School Athletic Association postseason as the fourth seed with a first-round bye, facing the winner of the Niles McKinley Edgewood Saturday. Good luck to all of our teams as they compete in postseason. I mean, it truly has been a remarkable season for all of these student athletes. I don't know how they do it. It's so many hours of practice, so many hours of play, and again, then to keep up with all of their academics. So, shout out to all of the student athletes, all of their parents who are, you know, at those games all the time, and then, of course, to our coaches and staff who are there. Just really appreciate it. They've had a great season, so shout out to them.
Fabulous. All right, anything else for the good of the group? All right, I will take a motion to adjourn. Bill, second?
I'll second.
Beth, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.